All right, and a call to order the planning board meeting for September twenty 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 three. We have the alphabetical roll call for attendance.
Mark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here.
Amy Glassmore here.
Kevin Hine here.
Deirdre Hobson here.
Okay, thank you. Um, on the benefit of everybody in the audience, uh, the matter two oh five Atlantic Avenue is being continued to October four. We're going to start with, uh, large home review of Windy Hill Road fifteen Windy Hill, and then we will deal with the subdivision plan for ninety-four Black Horse, so. Without further ado, Cassandra, if you wouldn't mind reading the public hearing notice for fifteen Windy Hill.
Yes. So pursuant to MGL chapter forty A and three hundred dash five point four of the Cohasset zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform webinar ID eight eight two seven three five four three eight four nine passcode nine one nine three two four. On Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three at six thirty P M. For a large house plan review for property being shown on Cohasset Assessor's Maps B one dash zero nine dash zero five five, also known as fifteen Windy Hill Road Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. The application is for a large house plan review for a single family home with a total residential gross floor area of three thousand nine hundred and ninety-six square feet. The application is submitted by Andrew and Catherine Nolton of fifteen Windy Hill Road Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. Copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the town clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty-one Highland Avenue, Monday through Thursday, eight A M. To four thirty P M. And Friday, eight A M. To twelve P M. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting CohassetMA.org slash five two four slash active PB applications. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. Signed, Thomas J. Callahan, Chair, Plating Board.
Thank you, Cassandra. And now, for people who are online, can you, uh, let them know how they can participate tonight? People who are here.
Members of the public, yes. So, uh, members of the public who wish to comment when the chair opens up for public comment can use the raise hand feature or the Q and A box.
Okay, thank you. All right, so who is here? We had seen Mr. and Mrs. Nolton. Um, is Reese, are you also here for them?
We also have, uh, Jonathan Apprea, I believe our architect on, as well as Caroline Reese from Merrill, uh, who did the site work.
Okay. Do you want to promote Mr. Apprea?
Yeah, that would be great. We can, uh, I can kind of kick us off if that's helpful.
Yeah, you have the floor, go ahead.
Excellent. So thank you for, uh, taking the time tonight. Um, so this is for fifteen Windy Hill Road. Uh, my, my wife Catherine and I are looking to um, make an addition to our house to expand it from twenty-four seventy-two, um, R G F A to about four thousand square feet. The key, I guess, I'll show kind of exactly, um, what we're starting with. Let me just make sure this shares. See, it's gonna show it. Well, it's just. There we go. It's not pulling up for me right now, excuse me. But where, here we go. So the house, um, currently has a front facing garage, um, and it kind of has two small rooms above it. And then kind of the side view, you'll see a porch, um, as well as just kind of what this is a large lawn. Um, we have currently gone through conservation as we are within, uh, the riverfront and have approval there as well as approval for a stormwater permit. Um, so just to show kind of the adjustments, um, that we're making, excuse me, let me just move this. Um, so we're keeping the main, uh, garrison part of the house and really just kind of expanding upon the original footprint, um, around moving the garage to the side, kind of have a side entrance garage. Um, the key driver there is just for our kids to kind of ride their bikes. Um, and then really rebuilding the original kind of side piece structure. Um, so as far as the aesthetic, the, the goal here was not to change too much of the original design, um, as we really enjoy it. Um, and then we have, uh, created, uh, a mudroom entry on the side entrance, um, and really just reconstructed the porch um, to be kind of just a little bit nicer than it is currently. Um, so I can, I guess, pause there. I guess if there are any questions or directions that you'd like for me to take this.
You, you have a site plan for the lots, so we see your setbacks and everything on.
So here. So the existing is on the left, and then you'll kind of see the adjustment on the right side. So you'll see also as part of conservation, um, we're agreeing to plant twenty-two hundred square feet of, uh, native plantings around the, the back lot towards where the riverfront area is, um, and you'll kind of see the existing driveway. Here, we'll, we'll be removing that and kind of just putting in grass, but as far as kind of disturbance to the property, it's really just the, the foundation. Um, we don't really have to adjust a lot, um, to fit this.
Any ledge being disturbed?
No. We're on the nicer side of the street without all the rocks. I don't know if nicer, but less ledge.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, go ahead.
You, Tom, do you want to run through everybody, or do you want us to just?
No, you can start it off.
I think I might even be the, in the right order. Uh, can you give us the overall dimensions of the space pre and post, and that means dimensions around the structure, dimensions in terms of height and, uh, proximity before and after to the street versus the back lot line?
Um, I don't know if Caroline Reese could join or be promoted.
Sure, I am. Um, I think that's in your application, Andrew, the dimensions, but we're not getting any closer to the street. I can zoom in here as far as the height, or maybe John Apprea. We're twenty-four five from the slot line. That's not changing. From the front, uh, we have that dimension here. Oh, it's probably on the existing. I gotta zoom in to see it. This is, I can tell you, this is the setback line. I'll trace it. I'm sorry, um, I'm not sharing the screen. It's a little small. So we're well within setback. I think this is thirty-four to the others, uh, to the rear lot line, if that's correct. And a good forty, fifty. I think it was, was it forty? I don't want to guess in the front. It looks like forty. I'm sorry, I can't, um.
I can read it. It's forty-four point eight to the.
But I didn't, I don't want to get this speed, but, uh, it looks like thirty-nine from the front corner and, um, oh, from the rear corner, I see there's kind of an angular one from the rear corner to the rear setback line. That is forty-four eight. The front is thirty-nine eight from the front corner to, can you see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does that answer as far as?
And what's the, uh, maximum height of the structure?
The maximum height, yeah, I think it, yeah, it unchanged, it's a twenty-eight six. The, the top kind of front facing house is really the, the highest point.
Are you planning, yeah, to, um, excavate in the back so that the structure, it's, it's a little hard from looking at the face front pictures as to what the actual height is?
If I may speak, uh, Andrew, if you show them the, the existing, uh, condition drawings, uh, that'll show the, the back elevation along with, and then you can pan to the other, um, proposed design to say that basically the back uh, grade is going to remain the same. Um, so you can see it on this, actually on, to the right, number four there, um, the height is indicated on the left side there, uh, at the top right corner.
Number four.
Yeah, there you go. So that's the twenty-eight foot six, and that's to, to average grade. If you go, uh, further down.
Measured, measured how under a new definition?
From the perimeter of the house with the average, uh, from, uh, from the average grade, basically, yeah. Uh, and you, what's, what's the new definition? Sorry.
Well, the new definition requires various measurement points around the bottom, around the foundation to determine what the average grade properly is.
Yeah, so where it's located, that, that's where it was established.
It's not just two or three, it's not just two or three points like we used to do, so.
Nope.
That's why I'm asking whether, how you calculate.
Yeah, so from, it just, it's, I, I didn't know if you wanted to get into detail, but, you know, for, so across the front, you'd pick point A, point B, uh, times that length, and you would find where it changed again, the next foot increment, you know, you multiply it by that length, and you go all the way around the building. That's how it was calculated.
Yeah, all right. So under our new definition, we measure to the ridge, and so you, you know, it's a thirty-five foot height limit, which the existing house exceeds, no problem with that, but the addition also exceeds it.
Uh, I think that, Tom, you might, the, the ridge elevation, uh, has to be related to the elevation of the first floor, isn't that correct? So what there's.
Average grade.
Yeah, what they're saying is, is that the average grade is, at the average grade, the, uh, ridge elevation is twenty-eight six. On the right side, it's on the right side of the diagram.
Right.
Yeah, he's using, um, uh, the set of height for the, the things in the middle of the screen with the, with the, uh, the BMW's, uh, sign uh, symbol, you know, the ridge is forty-nine point two, the average grade is twenty point seven, that's well under.
He's using it overseas.
It's under, it's under thirty feet. Um, not even close to the thirty-five foot, uh, maximum.
That's fine, that's fine. It's, he's using a different thing than I was thinking. That's all right, all right. Anybody else on the?
Um, can, can we ask, do we, there is some additional, uh, information that's helpful to us. One, have you contacted the local neighbors? Two, do you have a context study that indicates how this house fits within the context of Windy Hill? It's, uh, geographically one of the most, uh, coherent tiny little suburbs in Cohasset, so the houses look more like each other than they do in, in other places. So do we have documentation of that?
Yeah, so I, I had kind of provided, I think, in the original, um, I don't know about a, a context study other than what was submitted as far as like the additional houses within the neighborhood, um, but there are, you know, three different iterations, I would say, of this house, and, and this house falls within those three, you know, kind of same Royal Berrywells iteration, the only adjustment really being the side garage, um, piece, which two of the, um, the Royal Berrywells lake houses on our street, uh, have as well. So I think, you know, the idea here with what was designed was well within the kind of same.
I think we took a lot of inspiration from the other houses on the street, to be honest. There's, um, two other garrisons that we love that have been, ones in the process of being renovated. Um, so, I mean, our goal was to fit the neighborhood. That was really what we were trying to do.
Are the, are these houses Royal Berrywells designs?
Yes.
Yes.
The whole neighborhood was?
Not the whole neighborhood, but a good amount of houses were.
Yeah, yeah. So just for, uh, some context, if, if the board members have never heard of Ro- Royal Berrywells, um, he, he was the only guy doing kind of historical contextual designs that looked good back in the fifties, uh, and um, then he wrote a lot of books and, and studied things. There, there's some fine examples of Royal Berrywells on the South Shore, Quincy to Cohasset beyond. Uh, and, you know, the single, single window dormer, um, that you've used are kind of a typical thing that Royal Berrywells would do. Seems like a fine, basic historical, um, example that the addition to me fits, um, what Royal Berrywells might have done, or he's still alive.
We're trying for that, so thank you.
Yeah, good.
Another question is.
And these two, this house, this house has expanded, is smaller than the two new ones that we.
Across the street, correct?
Yes.
Um, question about your engagement with the Conservation Commission. You are obviously adding impervious surface, but you might be taking some away, and I don't see that. What is the general gist of what the Concomis said to you?
Uh, so with, so essentially, we, the discussion was mostly around the calculation of, you know, the increase, I would say, in disturbed, um, land, and that was to make sure that we provided kind of mitigation plantings close to the, the riverfront buffer as well as, um, getting approval to reuse the existing septic system for stormwater, which was tested, um, by Merrill, uh, and approved by Conservation to be used, so really trying to minimize the impact of the lot, um.
Good, that's a good thing you did. That's a good idea.
Evan, I see your hand up.
Yeah, um, I, I'm not seeing, uh, the, the, the details are pretty, um, small on my end here, but I'm, don't think I see any, um, uh, features that speak to the lighting. Um, I'm noting that the driveway is now going to be extending on the southern border of the lot, closer to the butter on the south. Um, the garage itself will not face the road, but will face that bu- a butter to the south. Um, can you speak to the lighting features associated with the driveway itself and any walkways? As well as lighting features that would be in the vicinity of entrance ways on that, particularly what that southern side, um, of the, of the, of the property in the area where it looks like you have the porch, that's an improved porch, and two entrance ways for garages. You know, typically garage entrance ways have their own illumination and areas in front of them are illuminated. Can you speak to how tho- that would be done?
Yeah, so the, the plan is to kind of have two coach lights above each of the garage doors as well as kind of, I think, recessed kind of overhead lighting within the porch, so kind of coming down and illuminating that path. There's no plan, um, for like a walkway at this point. It's probably just going to be grass or stone, uh, as part of the driveway. Um, but it's, it's really minimal lightings planned on that side.
The, um, lighting associated with the garage features there, would those be external? Um, I suspect they would be external to that facade of the home, and, uh, how would they be angled?
No, they would just be angled, I guess, down into the, into the driveway, probably mimicking, there's a garage directly across from us with lighting kind of coming across, so it very.
We wanted to mimic that driveway and garage next door. Those are butters, because we think it's fabulous.
The butters that you're talking about mimicking are the butters your garage is facing?
Correct.
So you're familiar with how their, their lighting looks, and I'm not sure whether any of it trespasses onto your property. The point being is, um, when we look at these reviews, we also like to see that there's been mitigation for any type of light trespass where, you know, and, and such as the plans show that there's been thought made to um, lighting so that it's effective, but it's effective, but not overreaching. It's effective, but it's not trespassing. So, uh, the specific types of features are important here, and you know, it's easy to do it wrong, so.
Yeah.
Um, I, I appreciate how you guys have noticed the lighting on your neighbor, and, um, you know, this can be done right, and it can be done well, but I'm just not seeing any specifics to that, and I would want, I'd like to, I'd like to have some specifics on that, and it's pretty straightforward. You know, the external features are this type of grade, it's this type of feature, um, you know, it, it needs to be added if it's not already on your plan somewhere. I think that's an important, uh, item.
But I did include kind of the commentary around the lighting. I mean, we can confirm that it won't be, um, reaching into our neighbor's property. We have recently planted, you know, five juniper trees in between, you know, our lots to kind of block, um, any sort of lighting or or it gives some privacy between the two lots, um. So, but I, you know, we can certainly, uh, commit to making sure that that's done correctly.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, there's specifics to it, and, and Clark, you're, you're probably, uh, closer to this, but it's, um, with, with some of the specific lighting that we've seen that's come through this board that's been, um, approved.
Well, yeah, I mean, typically, uh, we request dark sky technology or, and what we, we usually see a lighting package. I don't, I don't see the lights, um, on the architectural working drawings or the, the presentation architectural drawings. Um, with, with that said, um, you know, e- everything that I see in terms of attention to detail is, it seems to be carefully done, even though there are, um, some missing elements to what, what we have in our requirements for large home review vis a vis, um, the contact study and the, um, uh, and, and then the lights. Um, but, uh, again, I, I think that there's such, uh, a careful attention to detail with this submission. Um, and I have to sign off. I, I'd, I'd certainly recommend approval without, uh, conditions or that that the lighting package be, be submitted um, as a follow-up. Um, you know, something that perhaps could be administratively approved.
Yep, yep.
And hopefully I'll see you guys later.
Yeah, all right, Clark. See you in a little bit. Uh, Deirdre, you have anything you want to say, or?
I, I would just echo Clark's, um, comments. I think that, um, you know, it's the lighting, have the lighting plans submitted to us, but as far as I'm concerned, I think that they have done a excellent job in presenting to us. They're not changing much of the neighborhood, to be very honest, compared to what they're looking at across the street. Um, I think that this is very tastefully done, addition to a very stunning house in that neighborhood. So that's all I have to put on.
Thank you.
Uh, any members of the public wish to be heard on this application? Anyone? Think the names I'm seeing, they're all here for the next one, so. Um, what's the board's pleasure? I mean, I'm perfectly fine of approving this with the condition of the dark sky compliance and submission of a lighting, detailed lighting plan. You know, within a week's time, but, but approving it tonight, just, uh, with the.
I agree with you, Tom.
Uh, can I ask, as a record, do we have all of the documentation that we normally require?
Yes.
We do. We have the pictures of the neighbors, all those things that we are expecting. Any other ancillary information from the Conserv- Conservation Commission or any other board, just so that we have a full packet?
Are you kidding me?
I don't, I, I'm, just from what I'm hearing, we don't have the lighting details, and that can, I think, can be submitted after the fact here. Um, what we don't have, I don't think, is the comparison analysis to the level that, that we normally would be request, but I, my own recollection is, um, the projects across the street.
Can we, can we just ask?
Not that, not that that data counts for this, it's not, but, but nevertheless.
We have to be consistent.
I understand that, I understand that, but also what I was about to say, from our knowledge of this street, this house is, as expanded, is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. I don't know that we need it, but if you want to condition that, that.
Well, I presume, it, it sounded like they already had it, so it's important for us to have complete files.
Yeah, we had, we had mimicked kind of what was presented across the street for comparative analysis. I'm not sure if that changed. We, we didn't use the same houses, but.
Unfortunately, we're, uh, we're bound by setting specifications that then become files that twenty years later, somebody looks at and says, did you?
Fully understand.
Yeah, and then I'm, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, appendix in our application is what I'm trying to, here, let me, let me just.
It's really just the stuff that we have to have. That's, it's not.
What we require in this regard is we have people draw a circle around the property. I think it's usually three hundred feet, I believe it is.
Just give me.
I believe that's what we did for your, the neighbors across the street, and, uh, we ask you to tell us what the square footage is of all the houses within that circle, so that we see whether you're, because one of the criteria is whether the scale of your building is out of character with the area.
Yeah, just give me one quick second, and I will, in this, I believe it's in this document.
Tom, can we ju- we, can we approve this with a condition?
Let me, yeah, let's first somebody add this, because it might move the point whether we need, we need to get. We certainly need the lighting detail, and we need to condition dark sky compliance, but that, that we can do as a condition.
Great. That, what, what you're showing right here is what we expect for every project.
Yeah. So we, yeah, we have provided.
It looks familiar, actually.
Yeah, I only, I only live one street away from you, so.
I skipped, I skipped it. I saw, I thought, why, why recreate the wheel, um, but noted our, our house right here. Um, and then kind of just examples of the other houses, something to be familiar. Um, but hopefully this meets the, the request. We were trying to.
I'm, I'm a big believer in not reinventing the wheel, and you don't have to, so, now that, that's fine, so. Again, I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve this on the condition of dark sky lighting and the submission of a uh, required detailed lighting plan by December twenty-seven.
Yep, we will do that.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All right, all in favor? Uh, alphabetical roll call, I guess that's me first. Tom Kelly and I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Hine, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Okay, all right. Mrs. Norton, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Thanks.
All right, great. All righty, next, we are going to move to ninety-four Black Horse Lane, where we are entertaining a definitive subdivision plan, so. Cassandra, if you wouldn't mind, both reading the public notice and once again repeating for everybody in the public how they can participate.
I can do that. Um, for clarity purposes, do you, uh, before we get into that, do you want to officially vote to continue two oh five Atlantic? Just so we don't forget the end.
The, um, motion to continue two oh five Atlantic to, uh, October fourth at six thirty. All in favor? Tom Callahan and I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Hine, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
All right, thank you, Cassandra, for the finding. Okay, we're good.
And I'm just going to pull everybody in, and then I will read the public hearing notice. Just a moment. Pursuant to MGL chapter forty-one, section eighty-one dash T and eighty-one dash U. MGL, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform webinar ID eight eight three zero nine four seven three five one nine nine, passcode eight six nine two zero five. On Wednesday, September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six thirty P M. For a definitive subdivision for property being shown on Cohasset Assessor's Maps F seven dash three four dash zero one zero, F seven dash three four dash zero zero five, and F seven dash three four dash zero six eight ninety-four Black Horse Lane, Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. The application is for approval of definitive subdivision consisting of the three aforementioned lots. The application is submitted by Katie Custom Builders LLC of one sixty-four R. Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. A copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the town clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty-one Highland Avenue, Monday through Thursday, eight A M. To four thirty P M. And Friday, eight thirty A M. To twelve P M. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting CohassetMA.org slash five two four slash active PB applications. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. Signed, Thomas J. Callahan, Chair, Planning Board. Um, I will just make a note that this was originally continued from September sixth, which is why the public hearing notice says September sixth, um, so we did officially continue it to this date from September sixth. Uh, and then any members of the public can either raise their hand or use the key Q and A box to provide public comment.
Okay, thank you, Cassandra. Since we do have members of the public, the order we're going to follow here is, we're going to hear. order we're going to follow here is we're going to hear from the applicant first, then we will hear from our town's peer reviewer and members of the board and members of the public. So, uh, Adam and Brendan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair Callan. Good evening, everyone. This is Adam Brodsky. As you know, I'm a local environmental and land use lawyer. And I represent the applicant Katie Custom Homes LLC, which is represented by Nino Di Nuno this evening. And Brendan Sullivan from Merrill Engineering is our project engineer. Uh, I'd just like to, before we launch into the project, remind uh the planning board the context for this application. Uh, this subdivision plan was submitted at the suggestion of the town to attempt to resolve several pending appeals. You will recall that there is pending before the Massachusetts Land Court an appeal of the planning board's denial of approval of a common driveway for three proposed single-family dwellings at this property at ninety-four Black Horse Lane. And as a point of information, we conducted a case manager conference before Judge Spitzer on March twenty-first uh twenty twenty-three, the judge urged the parties to engage regarding settlement. And I'm going to paraphrase the judge, uh but the judge said something to the effect that the plaintiff is going to get a project on the property. Uh, the parties have agreed to extend various deadlines in the land court action to facilitate this process and pursue settlement. Additionally, there are pending for the zoning board of appeals three appeals of denials of building permits for single-family dwellings on three of the pre-existing lots on this property, each which has the benefit of the single lot exemption under the Cohasset zoning bylaws. And similarly, to facilitate this process in the hopes that we can resolve this dispute, uh, we've continued those public hearings on those three appeals. Uh, you know this property well, likely better than I do. Uh, the total lot area is a little over eight point seven acres and the property is located within the RV zoning district. The property contains a number of existing lots uh which are actually shown on the existing lot layout plan prepared by Merrill that was submitted with the definitive subdivision application. Uh, you'll know that Mr. Di Nuno's personal home and existing dwelling is located on what we're proposing to be Lot One under this subdivision. The LLC property is accessed from uh 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 from the public portion of Black Horse Lane over twenty-foot wide private way, which is also called Black Horse Lane, which leads some confusion. And Brendan will be able to show you on the plan uh the terminus of the public portion of Black Horse Lane. Um, as well as the uh start of the private way. Uh, the paved portion of the existing private way is presently approximately twelve feet wide. And that private way presently serves single-family dwellings at seventy, eighty, ninety, and again, uh Mr. Di Nuno's property at ninety-four Black Horse Lane. Uh, a- again, as I mentioned, um, I'll have Brendan point out to you the terminus, the end of the public portion of Black Horse Lane, as well as the start of the private portion of that way. And we're proposing to improve the private portion of Black Horse Lane and extend it. And so we're proposing to widen the existing uh pavement to eighteen feet. And in addition to repave that consistent with current subdivision standards. And then that private portion of Black Horse Lane will uh be extended and uh uh continue to serve the existing dwellings as well as ninety-four Black Horse Lane. And then will be extended to serve three new house lots which are designated lots two, three and four on the definitive subdivision plan. Just as a point of information, um you will see reference to a parcel B on the subdivision plan. Uh, this is a non-buildable lot containing wetlands, which is the subject of a private agreement with a butter uh which requires uh either that the butter have an exclusive use easement over that parcel B. Or if this process is successful, the lot will be con- conveyed to the butter. It has no real relevance to the uh the subdivision road, which is really the substance of this hearing tonight.
Are you going to show, are you going to put the plan up on the screen for us?
Oh, I we will, we will. And I'm just trying to give you a quick, quick. Brendan is going to take you through this.
Sorry.
And and so so um we're we're told it within the subdivision, there'll be a total of four house lots, three new house lots. A lot from Mr. Di Nuno's house as well as parcel B. And that comprises the totality of the property owned by the LLC, and that's what's being proposed this evening. Um, the private portion of Black Horse Lane you'll see will terminate in a cul-de-sac uh as Brendan will claim, which is designed to accommodate fire equipment. Uh, and in addition, uh the private portion of Black Horse Lane will be improved with an additional fire hydrant, so there'll be a total of three fire hydrants on the private portion of Black Horse Lane, underground utilities and strong water management best practices. Uh, there is an existing garage associated with Mr. Duno's house, which will be relocated on lot number one. And and just I I just want to just speak just quickly to a couple more points and then turn it over to Brendan. Uh, it's uneconomic to construct a new subdivision road to serve three new lots in strict compliance with your subdivision regulations. Uh, and similarly, if we actually built a a a a subdivision road that complied with all those requirements, it would require the removal of more trees, the removal of ledge and have greater impacts to the natural environment. So as such, we're proposing waivers, which uh Brendan will also review with you. I I'd also like to leave you with uh one last thought, which uh what is being proposed is more expensive to construct in either the proposed common driveway or the three individual driveways or the subject of the building permit appeals. And uh suggests that this represents a significant, I'm not sure the right word is concession. Um, but certainly a movement uh by Mr. Di Nuno towards the town's position to help facilitate this process. So with that said, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Brendan to go through the plan in more detail. And at the appropriate time, I know that he's prepared to respond to the peer review comments by Weston Sampson. So, thank you.
Uh, may I make one uh request, which is as we go through the various maps, can someone use an arrow or some other way to designate where we are on the map? So for people that are not um apprised of this area, they will be able to follow us with your discussion?
Ms. Glassmire, we're happy to do so. I'll ask Brendan to please do that. Thank you.
Brendan, go ahead.
Good evening. Uh, thank you, Adam. Um, so I'm currently sharing my screen. If everybody can see the title block, the title sheet for the proposed subdivision. Um, why don't I go through the plans first and then I can circle back and I'll go through the waivers requested. Um, so in the title sheet, we have, as Adam said, we're in um uh Residence District B. Um, we're proposing uh four residential lots and parcel B. Um, all the lots have the adequate uh frontage and um upland area. The existing conditions plan, um as Adam said, the uh Black Horse Lane, which is over here on the uh left-hand side of the um plan. The public portion of Black Horse Lane ends in this area here. Um, and then it turns into a uh twenty-foot wide public, um twenty-foot wide private way um that accesses the properties, the additional properties on Black Horse Lane. Um, numbers seventy, eighty and ninety and um and Mr. Duno's house ninety-four here. Uh, as Adam said, there's the property is made up of a numerous other uh lots that are labeled in here as well. Um, wetlands associated with the Gulf River. Um, or off to the um uh in the south east portion of the property. Uh, north is, north is um north is from right to left here. Um, so top of the page is looking east. So this is the existing conditions plan here. Um, what we're proposing um is maintaining the existing twenty-foot wide private way um and then widening it to uh thirty feet uh once we get past um approximately uh where the existing houses on for ninety-four Black Horse Lane. Um, so it'll be a thirty-foot wide way. Uh, we're creating uh Lot One, which would be maintained as the existing house, uh Lot Two and Three and Lot Four at the end of the cul-de-sac. Um, and then there's this parcel B off to the south um for a um for a an easement or um for a private party, as Adam had said. Um, Lot Four also comprises an area um to the west of the private way. Um, that is the area between the private way and a private residence um on Black Horse Lane. Uh, so those are the uh four lots in the parcel B in the right of way with the cul-de-sac. Um. So the existing, this is the existing condition showing the topography. Um, and you see the topography basically um you know, when the main the main portion of the lots, um you know, drain to the south and runoff goes to the south towards the wetlands and the Gulf River. Um. And then the the topography, as you come up the private way um from the public portion of Black Horse Lane. Um, it does go up in grade on the right-hand side, which would be to the west. Uh, comes up in grade over there and you can see the um the numerous outcrop of ledge in the area as well. Um, ex- the existing house um for ninety-four Black Horse and the existing garage and the existing driveway that services uh the property and the other properties as well. Um. So going to the proposed drainage drainage grading and drainage plan. Um, the widening of the existing twenty-foot wide private way. Um, and then into the uh thirty-foot wide right-of-way. Um, the roadway we're proposing is is uh eighteen feet wide uh with uh uh Betumis concrete curbs on either side. Um, and then maintaining this uh the cul-de-sac at the uh at the terminus at the um the end of the the end of the proposed roadway, uh which could accommodate a uh a fire truck. We do have um a couple catch basins um in this section, which go into infiltration unit, uh subsurface infiltration unit, um it discharges the uh runoff um overland, like I said before, it gets to um the wetlands and the association with um uh the Gulf River. Um, this is the plan and profile of the road will be connecting to existing utilities in the private way um and then extending them up to and at the terminus of the cul-de-sac. Um, as Adam said, there is a existing hydrant. Um, believe it's in like this area here, so which would be around Station Four, about Station Four, four and a half, I believe. Uh, we're proposing another hydrant near the end of the near the end of the cul-de-sac. Uh, the grade comes up at about six percent grade. Um, and then and then um there's a high point just before the cul-de-sac and and then it drops off at the end um to the back of the cul-de-sac. Um. So here's the uh detail, details for the project. Uh, typical cross-section, uh two nine-foot lanes, eighteen feet of pavement. Um, we get the two minutes concrete curb. Um, and then a level area on the side, on the shoulders. Uh, typical catch basin drainage manholes, uh infiltration units. Um. And then we have our um the uh erosion control. We certainly have erosion control um on the south side. Um, some stockpiling areas, uh erosion control uh along the abiding properties to the west. Excuse me, um drainage and catchment area plan, uh one some catchment area was um was looked at for the entire site. Um, and the proposed as well. Um, and then, so as I said before, we can go through the um just quickly go through the the wave is requested. Um. So the one, the first one would be for um the uh width of the width of the right-of-way, uh should not be less than forty feet in width. We are proposing thirty feet in width. Um. For the new um private way. The grade in the turnarounds should not exceed three percent. We're proposing um a couple of the areas in the cul-de-sac are um are greater than three percent. Uh, this is, this is to a, what we're trying to do is minimize ledge removal on the entire site. Uh, as you can see, there's numbers, the numbers of um numbers of areas of ledge on the site. And we know in some areas where we dig down, um you know, the ledge will be within, it could be within two or three feet of the uh of the existing grade. Uh, we have done test pits on the on the site for drain for drainage. Uh, we did get some decent depth on those. Um, and all those um satisfied with for the um for the drainage requirements. Uh, the cross-section, the streets, we're looking for, uh the width of the paved way um from eighteen from the twenty-six feet required down to eighteen. Um, we're not proposing any sidewalks. Um, no grass strips, um and the cut and fill slopes. Um. For uh for these, for the uh cross-sections. Um, the catch basin will be, um another requirement is the catch basin to be located in pairs, one each side of the roadway and at low points. Um, we're proposing the cross-section of this of this of the roadway to uh be pitched in one direction. So there's no need for a catch basin on the high side. There'll just be catch basins on the low side of the of the roadway. Um, all drains have a minimum twelve inches in diameter. Uh, we're proposing a um a tenant, excuse me, a ten-inch HDPE pipe, which is basically a plastic pipe. Once again, it's it's, we're trying to eliminate uh ledge removal on the site, on the site. Um. Another requirement is the um the concrete head walls. Obviously with the twelve inch with a uh plastic pipe, um we would be using um uh plastic flared ends at those as well. Um, the um public water main should be not less than eight inches in diameter. We're using we're using a, we're we're coming off the existing six-inch uh water main, uh which is also served by a hydrant at the end of the roadway. Um, and this will be coordinated with the um water department. Uh, another requirement is that the pipe should be reinforced concrete pipe. Um, once again, we're using the plastic pipe. Um, so this was another way we were looking for. And the uh sidewalks, uh once again, we're looking for a waiver for sidewalks being proposed. I think that's about all I had. Um.
What 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 is the distance of the cul-de-sac from Summer Street? Um. The end, the end of the cul-de-sac. And in in other words, the whole roadway.
Um, I do not have that information at this point.
I only ask that because glancing at our subdivision regs, we have a distance requirement for dead-end streets, so.
Um, is probably greater than eight hundred feet?
Uh, is it greater than fifteen hundred?
Um, I don't know.
Something we should probably know. All right, anything else from your team that you want to present?
Um. Not from my end. Adam, did I miss anything? Or do I think I covered everything?
No, thank you, Brendan. The uh the other existing fire hydrant, I believe, is somewhere at the north end of the private portion of Black Horse Lane, but again, a s- a minor detail, I believe that there are total uh two existing and and one new, but thank you. Uh, we've got nothing further, Chair Callan.
Um, before I go to our uh to um our peer review, Carolyn, quick, anything you wanted to say in response to Adam's opening comments about the state of the litigation?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I think it was accurately represented. I I will say, I don't quite recall Judge Spicer saying that the applicant was going to get something built there, um but that could just be my memory at this point.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll turn now to keep your plan up if you could, Brendan, uh.
Sure.
And um where's everybody on our team here? Oops, there he is. Darren. Darren, you were want to summarize, yeah, summarize the peer review, what additional questions you still have, things that we need to have our attention brought to you.
Sure, and thank you. Um, I'm Darren Kirchen, a team leader from Weston and Sampson. Uh, we actually have a brief presentation I can share. Is that coming up for everyone?
I see, I see it now.
Yeah, so this is just a pretty brief, just ten slides of our peer review. Um so I'll skip over some of the information the applicant has already presented of the, you know, acreage size and residential zoning district, but. Um we had reviewed just the overall conditions of of the location and the lots that are proposed. Um the main. Goal of the, the subdivision is to extend the existing private way, which was discussed already and widen that private way as well. And the creation of four lots from, from the nine existing parcels. Uh so our review standards were the classified laws, the subdivision regulations, and then we were also looking at just general good practices and constructability. Uh we had received materials um. Listed here, both the uh privately ex- extends, uh sorry, extension definitive subdivision plan from August twenty-second. And then the definitive plan subdivision, uh application and environmental impact and valuation statement from July twenty-sixth. Uh we'd issued a pure, our initial peer review memo on August thirtieth. Uh which is three weeks ago, and then last week we did just apply, we did receive uh responses from the applicants, we have not had. Time to do the, the full technical review, but we did provide an administrative review. Um so we'll, I'll flag as we go through some of the, the updates. Uh so generally, just the site plan, we had uh just some general formatting. Comments and questions uh that we asked the applicant to address, um so some included just having. The lane surveyor uh indexing or survey information correctly listed. Just some, just general CAD work cleanup of just the North Arrows, some labeling, um I won't go through all this, but. Just general updates and clar- clarifications on a lot of the drawings that were initially pr- provided again in August and then revised. A lot and issued to us last week. I believe, again, have not done a full technical review of those additional documents. So those are the main comments, and I guess we also had applied the uh the drain manhole and outlet protection. Um needed to be shown, which those details were, have been added, but again, not fully technically reviewed. Uh for our technical comments, we have flagged uh the radius of the cul-de-sac. Uh was indicated to be thirty feet instead of fifteen. Um we did flag a concern with some of the sloping of the cul-de-sac that it may trap stormwater, and applicant had con- headed. Had noted that some of the, the grades that they had provided. Um were not the edge of the. Uh the curbing, but the center line of the roadway, so they've noted that their. Response was that that was not an issue, but again, we have, have to do with their review of that. Um as the applicant had noted, they're requesting a waiver for the requirement to have catch basins at uh four hundred foot intervals. Uh we did fly that that was not conforming. Uh they also, we suggest that they provide twelve-inch stormwater drain lines um. As opposed to what is proposed, and again, that is a waiver request from the applicant. Uh similarly, a waiver request is the, the construction of the um. Outfalls of uh being concrete rather than uh I believe HDPE. Uh and as applicant had mentioned, they're tying into the six-inch, the subdivision requirements are for eight-inch upal iron. Uh again, they were requesting a waiver and coordinating with the Cohasset Water Department. Uh as additional comments, um. Also, the subdivision requirements are for the stormwater drains to be reinforced concrete. Uh and alternate material was provided and a waiver is being requested for that, um and it. Was indicated today that that's for uh reducing amount of ledge that needs to be removed. Uh we did find that in, in some areas, the cover over the stormwater drains did not meet two and a half feet. Uh and the applicant and their responses that we received last week did indicate that they're adjusting. Uh the cover to meet those requirements, but again, we, we need to do that uh supplemental peer review. Uh as additional comments, we had a dimensional requirements for scour protection that needed to be listed. Uh we requested some clarification on utility connections. Uh which is one of our general comments on the plans is, is showing all utilities, which applicant. Has indicated they have done, again, we haven't reviewed those updated plans we just received last week. Uh we also wanted to show uh the roadway monumentation and then also street sign locations on those plans. Uh and then just more general constructability comments, we, you know, we've just flagged to the applicant the mass CP requirements for imported soil. Um and managing uh soil, especially for residential setting, making sure that those meet uh similar soil policy. Of the mass CP and I are edit from a certified clean source or tested to make sure that they're suitable for residential applications. Uh we did not have backup information for the claim that there is no negative traffic impacts of the additional houses that are proposed in this area. And requested supplemental information. Uh we also requested a fire turning template, which we were provided uh again last week and haven't, haven't reviewed. Uh technically, but ha- have received that. We also want to supply signage to restrict on-street parking to support emergency vehicle access. Uh because this is a cul-de-sac and uh the driveway would be the only um means of egress into the area. Uh and then we looked for so slope stabilization, um because as the applicant had shown, there's. Significant steep slopes in this area, so during construction. On the onu, we're looking for slope stabilization to prevent erosion and sedimentation. Uh and then one item that we hadn't really seen in our, in the responses and. Sort of the expansion, expanded list of waivers that was issued last week. Um versus the original plan documents was the, the technical rationale for the waiver request. Uh so that was something we suggested uh is provided either in writing or as part of supplemental information, so that it's. Uh there's a, a record of why the applicant is seeking, uh I think up to nine waivers. And that was all of our technical comments.
Uh thank you, Darren, appreciate that, um all right, I'll. Start with the board, Deirdre, you had your hand up, so you get to go first.
I'm sorry, I'm running on two devices, I'm not sure, we've been having some issues at the public school with our devices and how things are running. Um I just was, I had a question about the fire hydrants, and it may be um pretty irrelevant. Um but it, yeah, I was just curious, so those fire hydrants set at a. Um water level height. They, you know, so we have climate change, we have water coming into the harbor, is there. A requirement for those hydrants to be set at a point where. I don't know, I, because we had a horrible experience here on How Road freezing levels, uh I'm just curious, is there. And maybe Kevin could speak to that, where hydrants always set at the same level due to the. Um level of the rock bed or the soil level. Just, just curious, because I know you said there were two new hydrants. Um I just, I'm just. Knowing what happened here and we had freezing, I'm just curious, I'm worried about that part of. Black Horse Lane, having not access to the hydrants, I don't know if anyone can answer that tonight, that may be the fire department, that may be. The engineer.
Um we, we typically go by um, you know, fire department standards, as far as freezing of the hydrants, you're, you know, in a. Uh in a low-lying area, you really can't prevent that, because the freezing happens underground. So a hydrant um typically is always dry. Um from the hydrant itself to a stack down underground until it reaches the water main. That's why you always see a, a water gate about three or four feet or five feet in front of. The hydrant, that's where the shut-off is. Um but and that's also where the, where the shut-off is, that, that supplies, I'm sorry, that supplies the shut-off to the um. To the hydrant itself, but there's a nut on top of the hydrant. Which spindles down, it doesn't spindle down just two feet or so, it goes down to the bottom of the hydrant stack itself. Um maybe it's shown on the detail, I, maybe I could. I don't have a, looks like I don't have a detail of the hydrant itself. But it's, it's um, so the hydrant goes down and it goes down, um. Obviously underground, and that stack is about maybe six or eight feet high until it goes down and reaches the water main. And then there's a weep hole at the bottom of that. So that when the hydrant is shut off, the um. The water drains out of that stack pipe. Now, if you're in a high water table area, that, that could freeze. And, you know, it could freeze through, you know, a couple of different ways, you know, just because of. Uh the fire department says their hydrant's frozen, doesn't mean it's frozen because of cold, it could be frozen because it's corroded. Or the, the valve itself is stuck, because that's why. They tend to flush the hydrants, they flush the hydrants for a number of reasons, one of the reasons is to, to actually move the apparatus inside the hydrant, so that it. Sort of free flows. Another reason why is to obviously is to flush the mains and to get, you know, to kind of backwash the mains to get. Um any sediment or anything else that could be in the main itself, um and keep the clean water flowing through there. Uh typically, the flood hydrant should be flushed like every year. Um but as far as the height of the hydrant goes, I mean, you know, if we were to put them all above, above. Flood plane, you know, then the fire department wouldn't be able to get to them, so we, we do have to put the hydrants and the spindles and the sockets. You know, within a reasonable um ground grade. Um now our hydrants are going to be up above elevation twenty um in this area. Um our flood plane um is elevation um in the backside is AE nine. And we're, so we're AE nine and um in the front, in the back. Um so we're, the height is will be well above the flood plane. Um I know it was a long answer, I hope that.
It was fine, and it was a long answer, unfortunately, in my neighborhood, many, many years ago. Almost twenty-one years ago, we had an experience where all of the hydrant in this area froze. And we are not in a, we're not in the same zone as Black Horse Lanes, curious, thank you.
Hey, uh Kevin was.
Yeah, just on the um, not to beat a dead horse and not to. Trip quip on the tie into the, the lane here, but who would maintain these um um. Hydrants within the private section of the right-of-way, who, whose obligation, long-term obligation would it be to maintain those?
I'm quite sure, actually, Adam, would, would that be part of the homeowner?
They have to create a homeowners association in order for this to be managed legally and appropriately according to state law?
Yes, so the, so the homeowner association will be created to maintain the roadway and the infrastructure in it. Um as far as the hydrants go, I thi- I think that would fall under um that association, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam.
Uh I don't know how the town of Cohasset handles fire hydrants. Um we oftentimes see, you know, municipal fire departments take responsibility for things that perhaps. Are, are not owned by the town, um I don't know the answer. To the extent that that obligation would fall on the homeowners. Um that, um that would be uh that we would address through a homeowners association, and I just want to make clear that there are two existing hydrants. And we're proposing one new hydrant.
And the two existing hydrants are around the public portion of Black Horse Lane, or where are those?
No, sir, I, I believe, and, and we'd have to refer to the plan, um I'm certain. Um that uh one of the existing. Uh one of the existing hydrants is on the sort of southern end of the existing private portion. And I believe that the other hydrant is on the northern portion of the private way. Uh but we'd have to consult the plan on that, and I don't have that uh information memorized.
And, and just for additional clarification on the um flood zone, what? What is the flood zone? I saw a reference on the peer review sheet that this is in a flood zone. You know, correct me if I'm wrong here, X designation, what does that mean with regard to elevations? And is there a line on this aerial schematic that shows the layout of the road? Um existing and proposed. And how um close or not the flood zone would be to that. Um as it's currently mapped and understood using FEMA flood zone maps.
So I'll defer to Brendan, the, the flood plane on uh. The subdivision properties is delineated on the plan with reference to zone AE with the appropriate elevation, which I believe is elevation nine. The zone X is not flood plain, so everything to essentially the left of the line. Um is not in the flood plain, so I, I can certainly, Brendan, Brendan, will you confirm that there's no. Portion of the subdivision road that's located within the flood plain?
That is, that is correct. The new subdivision road is, is not, it's all above, you know, where we, where we tie into the existing, um we're about at elevation twenty. Um and yes, it, the flood zone is, the FEMA flood plane is elevation AE nine. Um which is, um both areas is associated with the flooding from um. Uh the Gulf River.
Right, so, so, I mean, the subdivision road and uh I believe the proposed dwellings would all be located outside of the. FEMA flood zone.
And then what would be the um invert elevation of those drainage basins? Um I, I believe you proposed drainage basins um that go to a. Infiltration gallery, what is the invert elevation of that infiltration gallery, and can you point to that on the map, is that the um? Darker rectangular box there?
Yes, that is, so it's this, it's this rectangle box right here, if you can see my plan and my, my little hand.
I do.
The pointer, that's, so that's the infiltration unit picking up uh from a catch basin here, from a manhole. Catch basin here and a catch basin um near the cul-de-sac. Um the elevation of the infiltration basin um would be on the detail sheet. Hopefully, so the bottom of the elevation of the infiltration system is elevation seventeen. Um so if you're looking with relation to the flood plane, we're eight feet above the flood plane.
Okay, I appreciate the additional detail and having um them readily available on the uh sheets and in greater detail, thank you, that's all I have for now.
Sure.
And thank you, Kevin, Amy.
Um yeah, great, first off, I'd like to say that this has been a really edifying discussion. Of the level of effort on the part of the applicant. To sort of sort through all the many things that this particular piece of land requires. And um I think all of us on the planning board really appreciate the level of effort that you've been involved in. So I want to go reverse order, because I, I think that the thing that's most interesting about this piece of property is. We actually get to a, a level of complexity at the end. That sometimes we, I think, and as we've looked at this property, we have not paid that much attention to. So the first thing is, I really think it would be a terrific exercise for us to receive a rationale for the waivers. Mainly because most of the things that you're talking about in waivers, at least. Uh one, two, three, three or four of them for sure, where you're talking about changing the material. Circumstances of the evacuation of water somehow. And I don't understand why you would want to use plastic. Uh when we know that uh under certain circumstances, even PVC. Is uh subject to um. Various conditions that maybe this piece of environment as wet and as diverse of, of the landscape it is. Might not be the most appropriate, so I was sort of wondering why you were thinking of. Placing plastic, it's certainly easier to deal with, it's definitely easier to connect to. But it's not clear to me that it's, it's the right thing in an environment where you have a lot of. Uh variation and that variation is going to continue to exist over time. Um I, you had a really interesting discussion about, or it was, but it's very brief about slope. And we do know that what we're doing as we're moving away from this piece of property that's going to be developed, that the slope is rising. But, but I would, I think it would be really helpful to us to understand. Um why you mentioned it and what the consequence is potentially, because I have a concern that. You've got the uh the south end, the, the north end, the west end and the east end. And they all have different consequences uh topographically. Uh the other thi- uh and, and not, and I apologize, I'm going to be a little bit long-winded, but you wrote them out and I wanted to respond to them. Another thing that is uh important to me is that that cul-de-sac looks super tight. And if you were going to have a ladder truck coming into a a three-story house. I just wonder whether or not a ladder truck would actually be able to deal with that circumference. So verification of the actual practice of a um ladder truck would be really. Um, I think important. Uh, we don't really have traffic data, even though we've been looking at this piece of property for the full time I've ever been on the board. We don't know how, we do, we do know the the sort of um south. End of the property because it's a slope, but what we don't know is actually what goes on up and down. And it it would seem, and and by the way, I wanna make this as a side note. I really appreciate the fact that you understood that the road was too narrow and you were willing to make an accommodation. To contribute to the prospect of a better road. I I have a question later on that I'll raise about that. Um, but we still don't really have data. Uh, we really don't have data about the soil either, so we don't know the um compaction capability. And we also don't know the extent to which the soil is really. Uh, capable of transmitting water um. Uh, well, through, and the problem is if the water gets stuck in clay or anything else, we don't have any of that. Um, we, somebody else mentioned this question of the obligation of maintenance. I do think that it it is. Uh, reasonable to ask the question of a homeowners association. Because we're talking about a number of people that will ultimately be highly dependent upon one another. Um, I I didn't really understand the monumentation, other than to think that this must be some mechanism that that uh. Uh, somebody is supposed to place in order to identify the ownership property in uh interactions, but I'm not sure. Um, there wasn't uh uh any information per se in what we have, and that's not your, maybe it's there and you didn't have a chance to talk about it. But about the utility connections. I was curious about the scour protection explanation. I don't really know what that means. Um, there's a lot of different covers over drains. I don't know why it should be one or the other. Um, I I will say that one of the things that I was quite. Uh, confused about was, why wouldn't you build things even in excess of the capacity that you're describing? This is not a place, I think, to do minimum standards in terms of dimensions, because it is so saturated. And it has a lot of consequences for everybody that lives there in terms of potential flooding. Um, you mentioned br- drains, uh, it would seem to me that uh you'd be on the safe side to have bigger drains, and we do have. Examples in town where we have built. Um, subdivisions where we actually made drains and then actually people came after the whole subdivision was developed. And the drains were diminished in size, and they really had to be made bigger because of the the context. Um. Uh, let's see. Uh, I would really, uh, you know, as as a, as a person that's just a layperson, it would really be great if. One of the the pro- professionals who know what the best practices are. Would commit those practices to Cohasset, so that we would know what we're working against, what we need to be doing. Because right now, you tell us one thing, but you know, we're sort of aiming in the dark, because even our own standards are many years lo- old. Um, and uh finally, I think the peer review was very useful, but I thought they were a bit gentle. I think that this is a very complex landscape and there's more that can be uh learned. From uh further investigation, but I I wanna say overall, this has been an enormous improvement. In the conversation that we had in the beginning, and it and it sounds like we're gonna be able to to. Build a system together, that's a really great one.
Okay, you're all set. Thank you. All right, um, I have a couple of comments, just following up on what Amy just said about, you know, the change in materials and the. Uh, you know, the passage of time where our regs are are many years old, but. Um, Darren, I would like your firm to weigh in on whether these alternatives suggested. Make engineering sense. I understand you want them to justify the waivers, and I think they should. But I also want, would like to you guys to weigh in as well. Um, you know, there's nothing to say, some of our regulations aren't behind the times. Um, so, you know, not only uh should the applicant be justifying it. I want you to weigh in on whether the justification makes sense, uh. Get that in for me. Um, Adam, I've been asking this question, I'm just glancing at it, three twenty-seven point twenty-seven E. Easements for utilities, uh, is that all included in this, or or is another waiver gonna be needed? There seems to be a twenty-foot easement for utilities that is needed. A prohibition against going over somebody else's land for utilities, uh. You don't have to answer it, but now, but that's something I think we need to address. Um. And then, um, this homeowners association and document, I agree, we would probably wanna see that. Um, and have ourselves and council review that. I think the fire department needs to weigh in, uh, particularly about the maintenance of the hydrants that was brought up. And obviously about the cul-de-sac and the road and the grades and everything. Uh, Cassandra, if we could, I'd like to source the opposing rating from the fire department, please. Um. A performance guarantee for this project, has anybody on engineering on either side given any thought to what? An appropriate amount would be. Uh, for a perfor- ultimately for a performance guarantee, you have to make that determination at some point. Have to answer that right now. Um, and then Brendan, my last comments are about the plan itself. Brendan, could you go to the plan that shows the the four lots? The new ones, uh, there they are, okay. So, um. This, this area below the private way, I you you bring your cr- yes, you're right there, what? What is that? Who owns that?
That is, that is part of um, that is part of lot four. So lot, lot four is the the meat and bones of it is up here with the layboys.
Alright, I see, okay.
But then there's the, there's a strip of land uh that goes back here to include that.
Alright, well, in in light of the existence of that, which I presume can can't be built upon, what? What prevents, I guess this is part of your justification for the waiver, you don't, again, don't have to answer this right now, but I'm. Kind of wondering why we cannot have twenty feet wide pavement and a forty-foot uh right of way. Given the existence of this useless piece of land, uh. Which I presume is to the south, maybe not to the west of this roadway?
Uh, to the west, yes.
Yeah, so, but just, again, to to think about it in your justification for these easements, but it's. It's sitting there and it's going to be sort of this orphaned piece of land, and I don't see why it can't be put to use, but.
Sure, Calhan, a- again, uh, we we spoke to this earlier. We're trying to minimize alteration to the natural landscape and avoid ledge. Um, and candidly, there's also cost considerations. So all of those have argued in favor of the waivers. And again, we're, I've been keeping notes, um, we're happy to, so address uh all of the points, I think. Some of the information has already been presented or is in the package. For example, we have the fire department turning rate to study it, and I believe we have soil, soil data. Um, but I I just wanted to make clear that the 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 rationale for the. For the width of the of the right of way and the pavement was to reduce alteration to this area, because we we value. This property also. And um a- again, uh, a a large subdivision road would be out of uh keeping. Uh, with uh the, you know, the, the environmental sensibilities and the aesthetics of these properties.
Well, and I I don't disagree, but we, you know, and so my next set of comments is regarding, you know. Uh, the the discussion of the other properties, we have other properties who are going to access this, and I don't think we can. We're not just looking at four lots here, we're looking at at least. What, there's three other house lots at the moment, or three potential house lots at the moment? Um, so I think we we have to weigh the additional uses that are gonna be put in this road to determine whether eighteen feet or twenty feet. And I'm certainly not suggesting going over twenty, I'm 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 prepared to waiver that, you know, grant a waiver on twenty-six, but. Um, I think those have to be considered. And that also leads me to, you know, the future. Division potential of these four lots. Um. Is that something that could be contemplated, you know, I I don't wanna see A and R as, you know, five years, ten years, even one year from now. Creating more lots here.
I I I think that's easy to answer, if you look at the lots and the lot areas and the the uh. Predominance of wetlands, you will clearly see that that uh we have uh subdivided. The entire property to create a total of four building lots, one of which contains Mr. Danuno's home. And again, parcel B, and so I do not believe that there's any uh ability to further subdivide this property. And um we'll we'll address, you know, we'll address the, we'll address the traffic issue. I I just wanna be clear. Traffic associated with single-family homes is dominimus. Uh, we're not dealing with a mall, we're not dealing with a Shaw's parking lot. Uh, the number of vehicle trips for a four-bedroom home is very small. But we'll we'll provide that information to the board to provide the board at the comfort level. That in eighteen-foot wide, that's two nine-foot travel lanes is more than adequate. Uh, for, and and I guess it would be a total of, we have uh. Four properties on ours and, you know, the two existing houses, I believe access to seventy is is over a different portion of it. So we're talking about six or seven single-family homes, and I think we'll we'll be able to demonstrate to the board that. You'll find that the traffic, uh, the traffic impacts associated with seven single-family homes is small.
Okay, and then at the beginning, you mentioned that, you know, the the public and the private portions, have you actually determined? What is public and what is private on Black Horse Lane?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you at you. The part you're identifying as public, you know that that's been taken by the town as a public word? Cuz I'm not, I'm not sure of that, but I, if you are, that's. Good that the information is out there, do you also know what the width and the layout of the public portion of Black Horse Lane is?
We don't, it's not, it's not.
Okay.
Town property. Uh, we do know, uh, however, that the length of the private portion. Of Black Horse Lane, uh, which would be the subdivision road, is a total of approximately eight hundred and fifty feet. So we do know the answer to your first question, uh, which is what is the length of the subdivision road? Um, if you want to measure from Summer Street, somehow combine the public way with the private way. It would exceed the, presumably would exceed the requirements of fifteen hundred feet. But I'd suggest that the proper definition or the proper application of the definition of dead end in the regulations would relate to the subdivision road.
Um, alright, well, that's something we will determine on. Um, alright, um, I see that Deirdre and Kevin have their hands up again, I do wanna get to the public really soon, so uh. I don't know which one of you had your hand first, ladies first and Deirdre, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm dealing between my laptop and my phone, I'm all, thank you.
Alright, Kevin, I saw your hand up then, over here.
Um, I I'm gonna request additional information, and Brendan, you can take an opportunity to explain this to the extent that you've already thought about this. Um, and if not, more fully develop the concern I'm gonna put forth here. Um, it sounds like the road is um, uh, has a uh. A taper towards the south, so runoff from the road would go towards the Gulf. Um, and and vacate off the road that way, but there's still gonna be some area on the north side of this road. Where it sounds like there's outcrops, and there will be a source of water to that road. And we all know what happens when water ends up on a road during our colder months of the year, it ends up creating a sheet of ice on it. That has nowhere to go until the sun comes out, and then it gets, it's up to a temperature with the blacktop, it can. Vacate on the other side of the road, but during those colder days and during the, some of the darkest days of winter. There isn't an opportunity for that sheet flow to get where it needs to go without having a freeze thaw cycle. So I'm wondering if your design has a considered that. And anyone that's dr- driven around outcrops on roads or state roads or improved roads. You typically see a swale or a depression at the base or between the edge of that road and where an outcrop. Um, may be uh producing water. And it, there's an opportunity for that to do perhaps one of two things or both, infiltrate into the ground there. Or have a way to vacate out of that area, not going across the road. Has there been any consideration of that in this design that you've put forth here now?
Uh, that's something we can further look into, um, appreciate the comment. Um, but yeah, with with the the new roadway, we will have a a, you know, a better base material, it'll be better shoulders, so. Um, we'll be able to, you know, get rid of that, get rid of that runoff before it freezes. Um, and she flows across, across the road, but that, you are right, the, the um. The road will be, you know, as we call it, super elevated um in one direction, so everything will be flowing towards the Gulf, so we'll be down on one side, the low side, the gutter side. Um, uh, hope that answers your question, like I said, and we will look into further, you know, to prevent the icing situation on the, on the new roadway.
Thank you.
Alright, um. Any members of the public wish to be speak at the moment? I see we have a few. If you do raise your hand, you can be promoted. Then type in a Q and A. Okay, I'm seeing none, so um, I just wanna make sure, so we're going forward, we obviously have some more work to do. Um, Brendan and Darren, do you two know where you stand with your. Count, comments and countercomments and what you need from each other at this point? Are you?
Yeah, through the chair, yeah, I I believe we do, I think. Um. And some information provided in this hearing too is helpful, um, and you know, we will be doing a supplemental review. Um, and I I, to take your comment too, that we will comment on the materials. The waivers as well as looking at the applicant's justification for the waivers.
Right, yeah, so the um, this 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 impacts the timing of when we have our next hearing, but generally, we try to get. Our peer review a week before our meeting, which means applicant getting materials to the peer reviewer before that, so um. You know, um. Brendan, to do all these justifications, how long do you think you would need?
Tom, it's like Carolyn has a comment.
Yeah, I'm gonna get to it in a sec, just.
Um, so, I I I think the only additional information look, because we did, you know, we did send a response to the peer review comments and revised plans. Um, you know, the letter dated September thirteenth. Uh, so the only, I think the only additional information at this point is looking for a um, a rationale for the waivers.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes, I think so.
So, um, we could probably get that, you know, within a, within a few days, probably.
Okay. And then I think we need the fire department, if they did the turnaround thing, that's great, if, but. We need to weigh in on the maintenance of the hydrant issue that was brought up, and we can. Cassandra, if you can make a note to ask Chief Dockery that question and and um. Uh, have him submit that to us in writing.
Sure, Calhan, it's it's Adam Brodsky, can we have permission for Brendan to speak directly with Mr. Kirkgin, so like we'd expedite things?
Sure. I don't have, I don't have a problem unless anybody on the board has a problem. Um, Carolyn, sorry.
Thank you, I just had one question, um, in August, the August twenty-fourth, we got a letter from uh Merrill Engineering. That indicated that the plan was revised to show proposed turnaround at seventy Black Horse Lane. Yet I haven't seen that in the plans, and I was just wondering if maybe Brendan could point it out.
That is shown right here. You know, probably about thirty or forty feet in. Yeah, proposed crushed turnaround sta- stayed turning area.
And Ms. Murray, just, I don't know if you know the context of that. Um, that uh there was an A and R submittal for seventy Black Horse Lane. And consultations with the building department, and in connection with that A and R. Um, it was decided that the the owner of uh seventy Black Horse Lane, with the cooperation of Mr. Danuno. Um, it was decided that the the owner of seventy Black Horse Lane with the cooperation of Mr. Danuno. Would create a turnaround at the end of the public portion of Black Horse Lane. And so this is our half of that bargain to assist seventy Black Horse Lane.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, yeah.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Ian.
Uh, this is a complicated landscape. And I know that all of us would like to know exactly. A normal environment, you know, the last ten years and extreme environment. And the last one year, and then something we can't anticipate in terms of. The hydrologic consequences, because there are going to be between. Four and maybe eight people that have new residences on this property. Can we get a simulation model so that we actually know where the the risks, the greatest risks are, so we can. Uh, make uh, adjustments to the landscape to to try to mitigate that? I mean, this is not. My backyard, uh, literally, and I live at the, I live at the top of a hill and I produce water for my neighbors. And their front yard fills up, so I I think one of the things we're really responsible for is. Making sure that the residences and um, the people that are transgressing one way or the other. A- actually are in a safe environment. And and I would say that I think we're underplaying the potential of um, uh. The hydrologic events that we are starting to see, just anybody that has forgotten, Leamester got eleven inches of rain. And and the town's infrastructure was undermined, so it's our responsibility to enable. The developer to find convincing and also very clever ways of dealing with the future.
Um, yeah, I appreciate your comments, I mean, certainly up in Leamester, that was a isolated incident. Um, I mean, that eleven inches, I mean, I thought I, I thought I heard between the seven and nine inch range myself, but. Regardless, I mean, that came within a number of hours, um, four, five, six hours. No, no drainage design is going to, um. You know, is gonna, is gonna uh, satisfy that that amount of rainfall. We're using, um, Coacid has adopted the extreme, uh, what we call the Cornell numbers, which are the extreme events, which. Takes, so before it used to be the old, what we call TR fifty five, it was seven inches of rainfall. Um, during a twenty-four hour period, we're up to nine inches of rainfall in the twenty-four hour period. Um, anywhere in the South Shore, my guess is we haven't seen more than. Um, six or seven inches um, during a twenty-four hour rainfall ever. So, I I think the nine inch rainfall is a conservative number to design for. Um, certainly, you know, like I said, in Leamester, if we, if you get nine inches of rain in two or three hours. It it's, it's a- any, any drain system, as you can see from up there, you know, you know. Um, the, the sloughing in the roadways, the, you know, the undermining of a railroad bridge, you know, railroads are typically designed for a well over five hundred year storm events, so. Um, it it it's, it it was a, you know, it was a um. A monumental event, but a- anything you do here, you know, if you were to double the size of the infiltration system, that's still not going to.
I'm talking about not thinking about the landscape as we thought about it in the past. And that we have to actually uh, set the standards of what we would call. Normal and even extreme rain events aside and say, when you're as close as this property is. To a water course, you have to anticipate that you can't anticipate what's going to happen. And that's why simulation is just the best thing to do is to say, what happens if, what happens this? The only thing that can happen that's bad. Is if you don't decide to do it and then something terrible happens, so. You have the technical capability to do it and we as a town need that to be the kind of advice that we get.
If I might add, Ms. Glassmy, I just want to repeat. That the subdivision road is well outside of the flood plain, it's approximately eleven feet above the base flood elevation. And uh, neither the subdivision road nor the proposed house locations are going to be located within the. Flood plain, so this is not an instance where you need to be concerned with uh. Uh, coastal flooding even taking into consideration a sea level rise and any of those other conditions. And I would also add that uh, that the the more structure that you propose. Requires more trees removed, more ledge removed, which is the exact opposite of what this planning board has been advocating for. Uh, within the last several years, so you can't have it both ways, unfortunately. And so um, our systems are are designed uh, to comply with Cohasset's. Stormwater standards, which are 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 the most rigorous stormwater standards. That's the best uh, we can do, and again, anything more than that. Um, we're going to be undermining the other objectives of this planning board, which is to minimize alterations to natural environment.
Thank you.
I I would just add, I think the, Amy, you point out the classic problem we're all facing, I think everywhere, you know. Planning boards, planners, that the predictions of the future. Um, the current regulations and laws haven't caught up to the predictions of the future. Have to pay to deal with the predictions for the future. And uh, you know, ultimately. We agree to the applicants all kinds of things, but ultimately to impose things. That the regulations and the laws do not support would be difficult for us to do. And that's, you know, lawmakers, lawmakers everywhere need to start waking up to it. And 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 addressing these future predictions and changing the laws and the regulations that's needed, but we're not. That hasn't happened yet, that was, you know, it's beginning to happen, but it's not happened quite yet, and certainly not in Massachusetts.
Thank you.
So, all right, so um, Cassandra, what is our meeting schedule coming up next week? It's gonna be consuming anyway, uh, because we are just doing our public hearing. Um, the night of the fourth, I know we've continued things and I do want to leave. Fourth, open for the possibility that we do not finish our public hearing on the zoning bylaws next Wednesday and I. We need to get the, our review done. Uh, no later than that first week in October, so I'd I'd like to not put anything else on the fourth, that we can avoid it, but. What what else do we have the uh, meeting schedule?
Uh, so following the fourth, you would have October eighteenth. And then I believe the one after that is November first.
We, can everyone, experts, all be ready for the meeting? Brendan, Darren?
Uh, sorry, to the chair, we mentioning the October eighteenth hearing?
Yeah, October eighteen.
Yeah, so a week before then, yeah, and we were prepared to try to expedite things even for next, late next week, so. Cause we did just receive the applicant address all our initial comments, so we have to do the full technical review. Um, and then there's, you know, we can coordinate directly with Brendan on a. The rationale for the waivers, but I think yeah, the October eighteenth hearing will definitely work for us and then we would prepare. Submit our supplemental purity memo the week before, so by October eleven.
Okay.
Chair Callahan, is there any chance that the planning board is going to be meeting additionally during October to wait a a another full month? To reconvene.
We're, 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 we're meeting the fourth and I'm trying to be uh. Realistic that, you know, we're, we're doing our review of zoning bylaw amendments on the twenty seventh, that's our public hearing. Um, we're making. Uh, significant amendment to Article Four, use article and then. More housekeeping changes to Article Five that Article Four generates, we're not doing a lot of substance in Article Five, but. My experience so far in dealing with some other boards is that we just might not get through it in one night. I want to get through it in one night and I will push to get through it one night, even if we stay till eleven o'clock, but uh, in the event we don't. Because of the publication deadline for our warrant, we really would need to finish up on the fourth. Um, what else did we schedule for the fourth so far? Cassandra, we have.
Two oh five Atlantic is the other hearing that was just continued to the fourth.
Two oh five Atlantic, that's it.
That's it, that's all you have.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, um, I, I'm just conscious of the board's time and and whether we can get to it and. You know, so the eighteenth is our next meeting after that. That's, I mean, that's what we have, I just don't know how long it might take us to finish this up if we squeezed it in on the fourth.
No, we we understand your predicament, uh, obviously, from the applicant's point of view, we're trying to get this done as quickly as we.
I hear you. So, so we want it, we want it done too, I'm not, I'm not hearing giant alarm bells that would. Make this go beyond one more meeting, I might be wrong about that, but I'm not hearing that at this point, but. Um, the alternative, do we have anything else scheduled for the eighteenth at this point, Cassandra?
I won't be here.
You won't be here the eighteen, you won't be here the eighteen?
No, I have to be someplace else.
All right, okay, then in in light of there's nothing else scheduled, if I have to move, can we move the whole eighteenth meeting to the eleven?
To um, move it to October eleventh, let me just look. I don't see why not.
All right, how about that? Will that, will that be a useful compromise or acceptable compromise? We'll meet on the eleventh?
Thank you, thank you, Chair Callahan, I, I, we appreciate the concession.
All right, yeah, I just, I just don't want to clog up the fourth just in case, because we do have a deadline to get our review of the zoning bylaws done by then. So, all right, then.
Just to clarify, um, for peer review and everybody, that we would need to get um, everything in by the fourth.
Yeah, that that should still be workable, that should be plenty of time.
Yeah, that's still two weeks from tonight, so.
Okay, just wanted to make sure everybody was there.
Yeah, no pressure, okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to continue this to October eleventh at six thirty.
Second?
Oh, well, I'll make the motion then, I'm not gonna entertain that. Second, uh, roll call vote, uh, all in favor, Tom Callahan and I.
Amy Glassmy, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deirdre Hobbs and I.
Thank you, Deirdre, okay, all right, Adam and all, thank you, we'll see you.
Thank you, everyone.
Darren, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you very much.
All right, all right. All right, um. Carolyn, I'm not sure we need you for the rest of the, well, actually, we do, for one quick thing, um, if anybody didn't know, there was. Some excitement on what, Monday of this week up at Twenty Lambert's Lane.
Yep.
Um, one of the select board members got a call from somebody up there that there was blasting getting ready to go on. And uh, there was, and if anybody recalls, not all of you, I'm not sure were on the board, but we've had twenty. Lambert's Lane come to us with a proposal to develop four lots up there. But anyway, the long and short of it is that they had uh. A permit from the Com- Conservation Commission and a fire permit, fire department permit. Uh, the fire department permit was revoked that morning. I'm not sure exactly what's the status of the blasting caps that were already put in the holes, but uh, anyway, the. Property owner sent a letter to John Howland. Um, Carolyn, I forwarded that to you and really just need to put it in your hands at this moment to speak to that. Um, obviously, our concern as a board is whether the land alteration by law is involved. And um, this gentleman would like to go forward with.
Blasting.
Some blasting to move, move material around, he's claiming that no material would leave the site, so. I I don't want to discuss it beyond that, but uh, Carolyn, I'll leave it to look at the letter that was sent to John and uh. You know, help us craft a response to that, uh, or help John craft a response to this board, so.
Well, but in addition to uh, what you forwarded, Mr. Chair, um. John Ormond also emailed me directly and Cassandra with his uh, supporting documentation, so. Um, I'll, I'll have a further conversation with John Howland about all of that.
Okay, yeah, just keep us in the loop, that's all. Um, and Concon, and the fire department, obviously, they all, we all have an interest in this property, so. All right, thank you, I don't think we need you any further.
Okay, could, could I just ask one thing since um, Clark um, obviously did not rejoin us? Um, if Clark is going to be in attendance for October eleventh and wants to vote on this. He'll have to review uh, the video and all the materials.
He's, yeah, he said that ahead of time, that if he didn't make it, he was gonna do that so that he could vote on it.
Okay, great.
All right.
All right then, folks, have a good rest of the night, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And the only other business we have is that, uh, well, a reminder that our public hearing is next week. Uh, Cassandra and I will make sure, since many versions keep getting updated as we go to different boards, but you'll have. The warrant article versions of Articles Four and Five. We want to try to get through them in one night, um. I will just tell you that the Bylaw Committee, we have met with zoning and are going back to zoning on the twenty sixth, the night before. And we have met with alternative energies since some of the material in Article Four deals with solar. Uh, uses and I think uh. Cause I wasn't at the Z B C meeting Monday, but I believe those issues have been addressed and are getting incorporated, so. Um. And we'll, we may, we may have some further input from the zoning board on on our hearing on Wednesday, but. We'll make sure that you have the most up to date versions of the two articles, uh, I think the judge is still tweaking some of them. And we have minutes for, what do I believe, June seven, July twelve and July twenty ninth, is that what I saw?
Uh, it is definitely July twelfth and then I think.
Oh, sorry, July, July twenty sixth, July twelve, and I thought I saw earlier ones of June seven.
Yes, June seventh.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of those three nights?
They'll move.
All right, and let's have a move, Deirdre's second by Kevin, all in favor? Tom Callahan and I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deirdre Hobbs and I.
Okay, thank you, anybody else have any other matters not anticipated that they wish to bring up?
No, thank you.
All right, we'll have, see you next Wednesday, six thirty, motion to adjourn, someone?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, Tom Callahan and I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deirdre Hobbs and I.
And thank you, Cassandra, and thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra.
Angela, you're out there, I know, Angela, thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
All right, goodnight all.
Bye bye.